All right, I know Mr. Berno is logging on at the moment. Appreciate everybody's patience as we all get put together on this. There's Mr. Berno, so we've got that going for us. I think Mr. Smith, have you seen Ms. Mitchell or Ms. Minio? Are they up in the administrative offices now?
I've not seen them around, no.
Okay, we'll give it a few more minutes, I can go outside and see.
Alicia just popped into my room, she was going to set up.
Oh great, thank you, appreciate that. Mr. Berno, do you know whose room you're in?
I'm in Mr. Baugh's room.
I appreciate his bowling pins behind you, they always make me smile.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I do want to make sure we have everybody on for roll calls, so we can just be a little... A bit more patience, which we're getting good at these days.
I am so sorry, Madam President, I was down by the community room looking like a lost one, so a lost soul. It didn't occur to me that I was in the wrong spot.
Did you take Ms... bring Ms. Minio back up with you?
We came together, she like sashays up the stairs like it's no big deal, meanwhile, I like want to die. I need to start taking yoga.
Exactly, she's a good yogi. Okay, well, we will just wait.
She just got into a classroom, so she's probably logging on.
Okay, thank you. There we are, okay, I think we're all here. Um, thank you all for your patience tonight and your board members, your willingness to show up and find different places where we can all have this meeting safely. So, given that, I would like to call this meeting to order, which I'm going to need a different piece of paper to do, apparently we're having one of those days. I think it's clear we're having one of those days. In accordance with Ohio Revised Code 121.22 and House Bill 404, I now call the Bexley Board of Education, February 2nd, 2021, meeting, regular meeting to order. Mr. Smith, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Berno.
Here.
Ms. Minio. Ms. Minio.
You're on mute.
Yes, I know, I'm here, sorry.
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell.
Here.
Ms. Powers.
Here.
Ms. Snowden.
Here, thank you. All right, can I have a motion to approve our minutes, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
I'm sorry, sorry, I had, on just one thing, this is such a minor thing.
Go ahead, thank you.
On the January 20th special meeting.
Yes.
I know Michelle had an appointment and arrived just a little bit late. It doesn't show her in the original roll call, but I don't know if it shows her seconding the motion to go in executive session, because that was all executive session. I don't know if that was important or not to add when she arrived, I don't think it matters. It's, it was just something I noticed, just because it shows that she was, she showed, she wasn't on the roll call, but then I'm looking at what you just put up.
Yeah, Mr. Berno, I highlighted, we highlight the time that...
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed it, I'm so sorry, okay, sorry about that.
You should look for that, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Nope, that's good, thank you for checking and reading, reading it. Any other questions, I'm sorry, on our, on our minutes? Our amendments, okay, thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign, thank you, that motion carries. So, I'd like to move on to approval, can I have a motion to approve our agenda for this evening?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or changes? Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign, that motion carries.
I forgot to say aye, but I do mean aye, sorry.
I heard you, right, it's a little, it's good enough.
I was reading and zoned out.
Thank you. So, an explanation for our public watching this tonight. I'm going to shortly ask for a motion to go into executive session. As you may recall, under statute, the Board of Education can meet in executive session to discuss certain matters. Decisions to vote for any matters discussed in the executive session, however, must be made in public meeting. Therefore, after our executive session, we'll reconvene for any possible vote. I would now like to entertain a motion to go into executive session in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 121.22 for the consideration of the appointment, employment, or compensation of a public employee or official.
So moved.
Thank you, thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, that motion carries, okay. Thank you all for your patience while we attend to discussion in executive session, we'll be on as soon as that's completed.
Okay. All right, so in our panelists we have one, two, three, four, five, all of our board members on, am I correct? Thank you. So, Mr. Smith, do I need a motion to return back into regular session?
Yeah, that's been our practice is to have a motion to reconvene.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion to reconvene regular regular session, please?
Sure, move.
I can't.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposing sign? Thank you. That motion carries. So, I, we're moving on now to section 3A. And I will start by saying that I am now beyond pleased to inform our community that we will seek tonight to designate John Bono to negotiate a superintendent contract on behalf of the board with Jill Abraham, our chief academic officer, to be our next superintendent, starting June 1st, 2021. Our plan is that Dr. Good will continue to act as our super intern superintendent and will serve as a mentor to Mrs. Abraham as she readies herself for her new role, while still engaging in her present role as chief academic officer. We are thrilled that our district will be the beneficiary of this exceptional collaboration of like-minded educational powerhouses. The board will now seek to designate Mr. Bono to negotiate a contract with Mrs. Abraham in anticipation that she will officially take over at the helm, beginning, at the beginning of June, when Dr. Good's intern superintendent contract expires. But first, I want to give a little background information on our selection process. So, as many of you are aware, when we have discussions about appointment, employment, or compensation of an employee, of a public employee or official, we need to do that in executive session. So, we have, as I mentioned in my letter to the community last week, with Dr. Good in place, we've had the time to assess the needs of our district and use a critical lens to evaluate the necessary traits of our next leader. So, we started with our leadership profile. And many of you may recall that just a few years ago, we we engaged in a very deliberative process with, that cost our community $30,000 to have a full search firm come in. And one of the things that came out of that when we were searching for our superintendent was a leadership profile. So, we thought it made sense, having already invested that, to look at our leadership profile because it was developed with months-long input from our entire community. So, our students, our staff, parents, business and community leaders all participated in this. So, I want to read the section entitled "Characteristics of a New Superintendent That Comes From That Leadership Profile." This is in no particular order, but these were the characteristics we were looking for. Someone approachable and a good listener, collaborative, with curriculum background and experience, decisive, focused on student achievement, student-centered, someone with a vision for the district, committed long-term to the district, someone with a financial understanding and background, teaching and school leadership background, strong communication skills, a strong leader who's courageous, proactive, and a good delegator, someone who can think out of the box with cutting-edge thinking, strategic, problem solver, and courageous, someone transparent, truthful, honest, visible, someone with integrity who commands respect, someone who's trustworthy, authentic, builds trust in the staff, board, and community, understands and has experience with diversity and change in demographics, and works with the board to provide leadership to the entire community. Upon reading that profile, it became very apparent to us that it would be an unnecessary use of resources to engage in that effort, especially given the meaning, limitations due to COVID-19, because it remained a very accurate reflection of our intentions and desires for our next superintendent. Furthermore, we recognize that it is the best practice among top schools and institutions and businesses, and a goal of our strategic plan to develop a high-performing team. So, the board has been focused on building leadership succession plan from within our district for some time now. Good, recognizing that that organizational stability is in place when you have a good succession plan. So, we are fortunate, some of the best educators in the state are attracted to Bexley, and we found one such individual, Mrs. Abraham, over a year ago when she became our chief academic officer. We know that we need a leader who is collaborative and approachable with a deep understanding of teaching and school leadership, someone who is focused on student achievement while ensuring that each child is actively and inclusively developed his or her full potential. Jill is that leader. We also benefit from the fact that Jill knows Bexley well. As a current administrator, this, her hire will allow us a continuity to leadership that is especially welcome in this very chaotic year we are enduring because of the pandemic. Jill understands and appreciates our community administrators, teachers, and students, and shares the vision of our board's strategic plan. She can hit the ground running and avoid many pitfalls of one who does not know the community. Finally, we recognize that communication is one of the most necessary skills of an effective leader. We seek to honor our community's expectation regarding transparent, consistent, and complete information from the district. Jill has repeatedly impressed us with her ability not only to explain her work and vision, but also to listen to others and incorporate input in a wonderfully iterative fashion. She is exceptionally organized and prepared for each challenge she has faced. As the elected officials of our community, we believe that our community will be impressed and confident in the leadership Jill provides. We are mindful that given our current limitations of gathering, that not everyone has had the opportunity to meet Jill as they would have in the past. We also recognize that our process looks different this year than it has in the past. I want you to be assured that as a board, we worked very deliberately to weigh the pros and cons of how we might find a superintendent in this current pandemic. We had the benefit of some excellent expert information and input from Dr. Good and other leaders in education. Also, three of us board members have been, have gone through a superintendent search before, and we feel that this process, even though it is new to our community, it is the best one for us at this time. We also recognize that in this process, not all of our community members have had the opportunity to speak to Jill as they may have in the past. And we understand that our community wants input on the direction of our district. So, while it's the board's right and responsibility to make a decision on right and responsibility to make a decision on who we hire, we want our community to give input into how Ms. Abraham will start to lead our district. And that's no different now. Now, it will look a little different because we're going to have to put, we will, we're planning on putting together COVID-appropriate community coffees and get-togethers to further introduce Jill to our community. But we want you to know that we do continue to value your input, and we know that Ms. Abraham will as well, which is exactly why we've chosen her, because she's amazing, inclusive, and collaborative. And we want all of our community members to see that as well, which we are sure you will for those of you who haven't had the opportunity to meet her. So, please look forward to information coming soon to sign up for those coffee get-togethers. And now, I believe my fellow board members would like to take an opportunity to explain our process around this decision and their their decision using the other aspects of our leadership profile as a guide. So, I will start with Ms. Powers as our vice president.
Thank you, Marley. I want to start by saying that I am really excited about our ability to bring forward Jill Abraham as our next superintendent. Marley talked about our process. I'm going to talk a little bit more about the leadership profile and why I'm excited about this choice. In working to identify a new superintendent, I've wanted to be confident that our choice would meet the expectations of our community, including our students, families, parents, our teachers, our administrators, and staff. The leadership profile that Marley talked about that was prepared three and a half or four years ago included and followed months of input from those constituencies and provided the board at this time with critical information about what our community stakeholders value the most. The leadership profile that we have looked at ranked 25 qualities in order of their importance to our community. I'm going to read the top five qualities. These are the top five items that our community, our teachers, administrators, families, students named as being important in what they would expect in a superintendent. Number one, foster a positive professional climate of mutual trust and respect among faculty, staff, and administrators. Two, listen to and effectively represent the interests and concerns of students, staff, parents, and community members. Number three, hold a deep appreciation for diversity and the importance of providing safe and caring school environments. Number four, lead in an encouraging participatory and team-focused manner. And number five, have a clear vision of what is required to provide exemplary educational services and implement effective change. In summarizing these qualities and pulling together a profile of our ideal candidate, our consultants grouped desired qualities into four areas. One of the four areas was described as an efficient manager. And those qualities that were thought to embody an efficient manager, according to the work of our consultants, was that we needed an efficient manager who is able to organize people and resources to accomplish goals, who effectively plans and manages the long-term financial health of the district, who aligns budgets, long-range plans, and operational procedures with the district's vision, mission, and goals, who's accountable and holds others accountable, who attracts, leads, evaluates, and retains an effective team of administrators and staff, who identifies, confronts, and resolves issues and concerns in a timely manner, and who understands system thinking and implements system strategies. I had the opportunity to serve over the summer on the Learning Model Subcommittee and recently on the Hybrid 2.0 Task Force, both of which were led by Ms. Abraham. These were opportunities for me to observe the level of organization, goal-setting and reaching, communication skills, and efficiency that Ms. Abraham brings to every process. The Hybrid 2.0 Task Force involved more than 140 participants providing help and input, as well as feedback from about 630 students. Ms. Abraham kept our eyes on the goal of increasing consistency and student contact with teachers. The work of that committee was completed in just a few weeks. I can say with confidence that Ms. Abraham is the epitome of efficiency. She's excellent at identifying the issues, the why, with respect to any goal or problem. She listens effectively, and she keeps the student-centered mission and vision of our district front and center. Ms. Abraham has stepped forward as a leader throughout the pandemic and has been humbly accountable for her efforts. She has a process-oriented disposition. She is a strong communicator, both clear in her statements and an active and generous listener. She has brought these important skills to the weekly meetings of the evaluation team to consider our learning mode, helping us to track the proper data and evaluate the relevant questions for that weekly discussion. In addition, I have found her to be open, available, knowledgeable, confident, yet unassuming. Ms. Abraham provides us with continuity, but also she is a person with vision for our future, and she has a trusted ability to lead us. I'm really excited to have the opportunity to work with Ms. Abraham as our next superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Minnie.
Okay, I'm on. Um, so, thank you, Ms. Snowden, for that. It's really, I I'm going to open with a comment about my process and how I look at things from my professional perspective. So, those of you who know me or know what I do, know that I specialize in working with people who are nonverbal. Sometimes data is everything. Sometimes the narrative points are everything. Often, there's a combination. So, that's a little bit about, I think, how, like, what my decision-making process looks like. And so, I feel like that's relevant and germane to the conversation of, what does this process look like? Sometimes there are data-driven points. Sometimes there are narrative points. We synthesize that to come up with information. So, I think it's, Dr. Good uses the word iterative a lot, and I think that's always a good description of what's going on. We, as a board, I feel like I want to acknowledge the fact that we read every email that you send, and that information isn't data-driven, but it's narrative, and it gives us information that kind of helps us in the decision-making process. So, that's just a little bit about the process. Now, to the good stuff, I want to talk about my experiences with Mrs. Abraham. I'm excited to export. Deep breath. I'm excited to support her as our choice for superintendent. During the last year, as a board representative to our academic committee, I've had many opportunities. I've had opportunities to meet quarterly with Ms. Abraham, one-on-one. And I always find her to be knowledgeable, prepared, engaged, responsive to answering questions. I personally have heard from her firsthand about her focus and attention to the equity work facing the district. This fall, we had a conversation that really impressed me with her attention to the achievement gaps that are secondary to the spring, so to the spring learning mode, and how we were going to address those, not only from the student perspective, but in a way to communicate that with the parents during the conferences so that parents felt empowered to support their students as we move forward with their education. And then, I want to highlight just her development. I've heard from her firsthand, the development process using the instructional coaches, the benefits not only from the staff perspective, but from the student perspective. She has a good insight as to how all those processes have worked and the benefits of them. I feel like it's important to highlight that she's familiar with our staff, our students, our community, and our strategic plan. She's coming in with inside, with basically inside information as to who we are and what we value, and that gives her a head start in ways that other candidates just wouldn't have. She's been listening, and I've always felt that. Marley kind of highlighted some of the things that we identified or that were identified previously on the leadership profile. Courageous, strategic, transparent, and commands respect were the ones that really stuck, stood out when Marley kind of reviewed that as words that I would use to describe Ms. Abraham. I think Victoria just mentioned she built, oh, no, maybe you didn't, this is not something that Victoria said. This is something I want to add, but we've also highlighted building trust in staff and building leadership from within. And again, I've had personal conversations with Ms. Abraham where I could, like, see that process working. It's exciting, and I'm excited, as Marley mentioned, for the community to be involved in some of this conversation so that you can see and hear firsthand some of the work that she's done. Again, not to talk about myself, but I think the idea of, like, what I bring to the board is that excitement and the passion for, like, the edge. I'm a little bit of, like, the education geek, I think, like, on the board. And I have to say that in all the conversations I've had as a board member, the ones that I'm the most excited or the most energized about what's happening in our schools tend to be conversations that I've had with Ms. Abraham. And so, I think that energy, like, her knowledge and her passion show through in the conversations that she has. And I'm always energized by, like, what we have cooking based on what she's sharing. She is a process-oriented person, and I can say, I think that was what Victoria said, was she's a process-oriented person. And I will share that I've had two two people on the team say, two separate occasions, say that she's the most prepared person I know when it comes to a meeting. And I think that is really something that is to be valued and I'm excited for. And so, I think when you have that combination of prepared, strategic, and a listener, she brings a lot to the table, and we're very excited about how this is about moving forward.
Sorry, it's muted. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Mr. Barno.
Thanks. I agree with everything that the three of you have said so far, but I kind of, one of the things that I try to focus on, one is, as was mentioned, Marley and Alicia, and I went through the process with Dr. Miller. That's not the only way to get to a superintendent. Many, many districts that I researched and information that was provided by Dr. Good and other sources have these succession plans. Go with the internal. It's not always a big community event. Not that we don't value the community input, but I think one of the things that, at least for me personally, one of the things that is important is to see and understand, and this is even how we did our last process. We went into those, the candidates' districts and talked to the people that they worked with and got that information from those people. One of the advantages of with Jill is, I think, maybe like an on-the-job interview, so to speak, is the December 10th meeting that we had talking about the Service Model Task Force and her PowerPoint and how that went. I think that that's a perfect example of why I strongly support appointing Jill Ms. Abraham as our superintendent. You know, there's been a lot of discussion about the process. By law, when we talk about employment, we discuss these things in executive session. When Dr. Miller left, we've been discussing this. That is an important point. This process isn't just something we threw together last week or a couple of weeks ago or whenever. We've been talking about this and had some very robust discussions about where we come down and the pros and cons of doing a big national search, a local search, going through the ESC. We had a number of options of how we would do this. One of the things that I believe that my colleagues trusted in is what Ms. Abraham can bring to this district and what she's already brought to this district. Again, I would invite anyone to go back and watch the video from the December 10th meeting and pull up the Service Model Task Force. As Ms. Powers mentioned, there were 141 members that were part of this task force, six different work groups, numerous people that Ms. Abraham was in charge of putting that together. And when you watch that meeting, and again, I understand this is one meeting, but I think it's a great example of what we have found with somebody that's right here in our backyard, so to speak, to appoint a superintendent. And that is her ability, as my other colleagues have mentioned, her ability to bring people together, to be very deliberate and smart and intelligent and see the viewpoints of many people and understand those viewpoints and be able to change with those. One of the things that impressed me especially with that, but, you know, is working with Ms. Abraham over the last over a year and a half or almost two years, I'm impressed by her thoroughness and thoughtfulness and the attention to the detail that she has. The service task model was a perfect example of that. Again, I keep referring back to that because it's the epitome of what I see in Ms. Abraham. She answered questions. She was flexible. She addressed the needs of numerous, numerous constituencies. I would challenge anyone, if you can put together 141 different people on a task force and come to a final decision that not everybody is going to agree with, but which is the right decision? That's kind of what we're looking at here. I know that there are people out there saying, we need to do this community, the meetings, and do these interviews. That's a good way to do things, but this is also a good way to do things. And let's not get lost in the process of it. I think the results and the substance of where someone arrives is also vitally important. We've been through this just three, just over three years ago, three and a half years ago. And as Ms. Snowden pointed out, we have the profile. That was put together by a search firm that we put together that we look at that and use that as a springboard. We weighed the pros and cons. Again, a robust discussion in executive session that's required by law that we've had among ourselves. And we've listened and we've talked to people, and we know that, we know that there are some concerns about we didn't have community feedback or input. We have community feedback and input. We have that from that process, but also from the process over the last year that we've had task force committees with numerous variety of people from our community. And again, I believe that getting all of this information and weighing the pros and cons, that we are not discounting other people's thoughts of wanting to have these community meetings and looking and talking to the candidates. We will have that opportunity with Ms. Abraham as we proceed. But we wanted what was best, and when we've got to this conclusion, I believe that this is our best decision. We have the best candidate for our job, for our superintendent job right here, and I think Ms. Abraham is that. She's a true leader. I think her leadership skills have been shown to us and throughout the district. And I think that's an important part to this whole thing. You might not like the process. This is new to Bexley. This, living here for over 22 years, I know that's a difficult thing sometimes here to do something different. Doesn't mean it's not right, and I think in this situation, with all the circumstances that we have, this is the right decision. She is the right person. And I think when you go through, again, go and look back at that December 10th meeting. Look at her demeanor, the questions that she gets from the board, not only from that meeting, but in the past, that we're not always great about what the questions we ask, but handle them, you know, as a leader would, calmly, politely, exactly answering questions. She didn't have the answer. She would tell you that. If things needed to be changed, she would do that. So, in the end, I think the process has been thorough. It has been deliberate. We have been going through this for three or four months, and we've been talking about this. And from my perspective, there's no other better person to lead us than Ms. Abraham. This decision wasn't rushed. This wasn't pushed through. It was informed by lots of information and data. Again, I know there's a lot of concerns about, from the public, about the community involvement, but, you know, from my perspective, I ultimately answer to you. If you believe that there are other things that you would like me to know, email me. If you believe that there are other things that you would like me to know, email me, send me your phone number. I would be happy to talk to you about why I believe this is the best decision. I'm happy to discuss that. My email is john.barno@bexley.us. It's on the website. Feel free to contact me if you want to talk on the phone and talk about this process of where we came down. I'm happy to do that. Anybody that wants to have that time, I'm happy to do that. So I guess from, in the end, I don't want to get lost in the process. I know that a lot of, again, the concerns about how the process was. This was something that we have been thinking and talking about and having lots of discussions and weighing the pros and cons and looking what our best option is. Again, I think this is the best option, and I don't want the procedure or the process to cloud the ultimate result, and that is, I believe we have the best person for the job in Ms. Abraham. I thoroughly and utterly trust my colleagues that we have made the right decision. I trust them with this decision. I trust that this is what we are undertaking is the best for our district as we go forward. You know, there are a lot of circumstances here that we could say, well, the pandemic, all of these other things, we have somebody in place. Just, I just wanted to be clear. I don't believe any of us think that we brought, that we're bringing on or planning on appointing Ms. Abraham as our superintendent because of the circumstances. The circumstances are what they are. However, in the end, she is the right person for the job, regardless of the circumstances, regardless of where we are, and we're not letting the circumstances dictate this. This isn't the easy pick or this isn't a pandemic pick. She is the right person for the job, and I think that, I strongly believe that. And again, the work that she's done for our district over the last year and a half for me was plenty of an interview, and we've had feedback and information, and I think she is the right person for the job. So I will strongly support her appointment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Borno. Ms. Mitchell.
Thank you, Ms. Snowden. I am equally excited as my colleagues about the appointment of Ms. Abraham to the position of superintendent, and I certainly won't belabor the community in terms of raising the points that everyone else has already made, but I did want to talk a little bit about what impressed me about Ms. Abraham over the last year and a half, almost two years, and also in my engagement with her. I know the community may think that the only thing I ever talk about is diversity, equity, and inclusion, but I do talk about lots of other things, but this is one particular area where I had an opportunity to evaluate her from afar and then also work alongside her. And the thing that I think has always impressed me about her ability to step into a space with confidence, warmth, humility of not necessarily sympathizing but willing to empathize and be open to the frustration or the confusion that community members may feel and be engaging enough and responsive enough to say, I want to work with you to see something better. And not to make, you know, postured promises, but really come back every time and acknowledge to those community members that I see you, I hear you, and I value you. And that she saw our students and she heard our students. She has engaged in the last year when, yes, the world was responding to the pandemic. We were also living through probably one of the most visible civil rights, justice, injustice moments in our most recent history. And she took the moment to say, I value those voices. She's been a part of the D E and I work that the district has been engaged in since she came here and been critical in the, just the restructuring of our academic goals that support many, many areas of achievement for students of color, in particular in our district. I have watched her support and mentor not only her staff and administrators, but I watched her incredible relationship with Ms. Lason Smith, who is now no longer with us. And I think the thing that impressed me deeply about that is that's not easy work. And it's not easy work when you come to the conversation with a different lens, but she always remains open and willing to hear and support and advocate. And it was something that has always stuck with me. I think it helped us to be able to continue the work that we do in this district. I see the relationships that she has built with our administrative staff, setting those expectations, having those tough conversations, but acknowledging that we'll get through them together, that collaboration again. And so while I appreciate that our community will need to take the opportunity to get to know her and see her in these lights in the coming months, what I know and what I have seen is that she will collect that data and she will come back with a process because she is listening, she is watching, and she values deeply the expectations of our community, the expectations of this board. And aside from the fact that she has just shown herself to be incredibly, incredibly warm and engaging human being, and it's exactly what we're looking for to lead our district, someone who is excited about all the things that we are known for and all the things that we aspire to be. And so I, you know, don't want to talk forever. I could probably go on. I thank my colleagues for the opportunity to have these discussions as we have over the last couple of months. Excuse me. I have a tickle. And I'm looking forward to seeing Ms. Abraham map out a vision for the district that builds on the work that we have done and the work that she's been engaged in these last couple of years. And I thank you for that. I thank you for what you have done with the staff and partnered with the administrative staff and our teachers, and I'm really just excited about what you will do. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mitchell. I appreciate that. I just want to close out this section. I wanted something that I forgot to mention. I got a note from a staff member early this evening, and I just thought it was important for our community to also know the support that Jill has from her staff. So here's just an example of one. It says, "I want to thank you for making such a wise decision in choosing Jill as our next superintendent. Her knowledge of our staff, students, and community will provide us with a much-needed smooth transition into the next school year. I am confident in her ability to listen, to learn with, and lead our schools and community in the upcoming years." I thought that was a pretty good summary of why we all feel so good about this, and again, coming from our staff. So, given all of that and our statements and that background information, I would now like to entertain a motion to appoint John Borno as the Board Representative to negotiate on behalf of the Board of Education a superintendent contract with Jill Abraham.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Am I allowed to vote for this?
You are all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. So with that motion carried, we are done with our Section 3A. I know that Ms. Abraham wanted to make a comment to us all, and perhaps this is a good time for that. Ms. Abraham, are you on? There she is. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. President Snowden and members of the Board of Ed, I just want to thank you for affording me this incredible opportunity to serve the students, faculty, and staff of Bexley City Schools and the Bexley community. I am truly honored to serve the district in this new capacity, and I recognize that in a year in which we've experienced significant change, that I'm uniquely positioned to provide continuity to our students, our staff, and our Bexley families. I'm grateful for the experiences that I've gained in my role as the Chief Academic Officer, and I look forward to utilizing those experiences in my continued support for our faculty and staff with their ongoing work. And as I look ahead, I'm most excited for continued partnership with stakeholders as we thoughtfully take steps to return to the exceptional learning experience afforded to our students pre-pandemic and as defined by our strategic plan to further define our priorities and practices to ensure that all Bexley students feel represented and valued as a member of our school community with equitable access to the vast experiences available to our students. And I look forward to continued work as we ensure that our students' mental health and well-being needs are nurtured with the support of the entire community. I am a passionate learner and a listener and a leader, and I am most grateful for this opportunity. I thank you.
Thank you very much. We're thrilled. Very excited. Thank you, Jill. So I think we can now move on to Section 4A, which is our Board Reports. I do, Superintendent, sorry, the Superintendent Policy Committee does not meet this month, so I can pass on quickly to Ms. Powers.
Thank you, Marley. Two reports. First, the Bexley Rec Board met on January 13th. Mike Price reported that there was a smooth transition for providing Jeffrey Care during the new hybrid 2.0 model. He wanted to be sure that I thanked Harley Williams, Jill Abraham, and our elementary principals for their support in all of that transition and the work that went into that. John Ikenberry has also been supportive in helping the use of Bexley School Bus District, Bexley School District buses to transport the students. Currently, there are 70 students, more or less, who are participating in that, and the care is being provided at St. Albans. Because the stay-at-home order has been extended, Bexley Rec Youth Basketball for the winter had to be canceled, and there is a hope that that can be picked up in the summer. The next meeting is scheduled for tomorrow evening. Second report is from the January 14th meeting of the Franklin County School Board Member Alliance. In that meeting, the group discussed the status of the Cup Patterson School Funding Reform Legislation. There was also a discussion about an anticipated lawsuit regarding the state's Ed Choice, Educational Choice Voucher Program on the grounds that it unfairly diverts funds away from public education. In addition, group members discussed their current learning modes, and at that time, most of the districts represented in the group were in a hybrid mode. Some of them did not have their students back from winter break yet. The next meeting of that group is scheduled for this Saturday, February 13th. That's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Borno.
I don't have any specific updates on the Technology or Athletic Board. I did reach out to Dr. Williams, and there's no, there will be no Athletic Board meetings this year, but he graciously offered that if there's anything that the board needed for the Athletic Board to discuss, or if there's any policies or anything specific that may need to be brought to the Athletic Board, to just let him know, and he would be happy to schedule a meeting. So other than that, I don't have any reports. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Minio. Michelle, you're muted. Sorry.
You think you clicked the button, and you really don't. Okay. So I have nothing new to report. You know, usually I get an email at the beginning of the month giving me a legislative update from OSBA, and that just hasn't arrived yet because it's only the second day in the month. So I will forward you guys the information as I get it.
Perfect. Thank you. Ms. Mitchell.
Yes, I just have a couple of quick updates for BEF. The One For All campaign is still chugging along. We have reached about 750,000 donations and confirmed and committed direct payments, I think those are called, and committed donations. So we're about $250,000 off the goal for the $1 million goal that we set, and we cannot hesitate to thank the BEF for what an incredible and impressive job that they have done in the few short months of helping our students get devices in their hands. It really made a difference in the success of our learning modality, and so we'll be eternally always singing their praises, but thankful and grateful for their work. They will have a Campaign Committee meeting tomorrow at 6:30. BEF will participate again in the annual State of the Community event that's organized by the City of Bexley that's set for February 18th, starting at 6:30 PM, and our Chair, Mr. Seigerman, will present there. We also are planning a really exciting event. It is not in the place, in replace of Bravo. That event obviously will not be able to take place this year, but this event is really like a virtual gratitude event set for April 21st. And so there, we're early on in the stages of what that's going to look like to recognize not only teachers and staff. We always celebrate a BEF Teacher of the Year at that, at this event usually, and well, this particular event will be doing something a little different around that because we had some real star standout teachers. I don't know whether we could even pick one. There's a lot to put on a virtual event, so I don't know what that plan will be, but I will report out next month with a little bit more details and how we can all support. And then the Youth Philanthropy Group did a Lion Sleeps Tonight sleep mask packet to all of the Bexley Middle School students. It included sleep masks, earplugs, teabags, and tips to get a good night's sleep. Thank you very much, Youth Philanthropy Group, because I have a middle schooler that does not seem to understand the value of a good night's sleep. So we'll be putting that to good use, and that is all I have for today.
Thank you. And your report brought up two things that I should have mentioned. I appreciate, you mentioned the State of Community that will be, we will participate in that as well, along with other city organizations, and that's 6:30 on the 18th. So look for an update from us at that. And also, the Friend of Education nominations are now available, so that information should be on our website. If it's not, you can, you can email me or Mary Davison in Dr. Good's office, and she can forward you on a Friend of Education nomination. As a former recipient of that award, I have to say, it's a very thoughtful, meaningful award, and I really appreciate when our community offers up those nominees. We always get to hear so many great stories that we might not otherwise get to hear. So we really appreciate all nominations. So.
Ms. Snowden, you reminded me something about the Teacher of the Year nominations. I believe they're going to nominate from each school this year and then have one, so they'll have a representative from each school and then one at Bexley Educator of the Year. So I apologize, I misspoke on that.
That's great. Thank you for the update. All right, Ms. George, how is getting back into school?
It's going well. Pretty much, we thought that even though this year has been super tough, it's still important to give back. And so even though our charity month normally takes place in November, we created our own charity month in February, and we're super excited to get started on that. We're doing a canned food drive where we will be donated to the Broad Street Food Pantry. We're going to be doing a Candygram delivery and then also just donations in general. And I just really wanted to say, thank Mr. Smith for helping us through all of this, figuring out the best way to do this at a distance, and we're just really super excited to get started on that. So really, I have.
Great. Thank you so much, Sarah. All right, so we are now moving on to pass our Board Reports on to Section 5A, our Superintendent's comments. Dr. Good.
Thank you, President Snowden. Good evening, and thank you.
Thank you, President Snowden. Good evening, and thank congratulations to the Board of Education for their selection of Jill Abraham to become the Superintendent of Bexley City Schools effective June 1, 2021. It really has been a privilege and a pleasure to work with Jill and and the entire Bexley City Schools professional learning community. My objective for the next four months is to support the district and its successor superintendent as Bexley continues to lead the education industry. I have every confidence that this great city's local public school system will prosper under Ms. Abraham's leadership because Jill is the consummate collaborator. She has demonstrated time and again, everyone has heard that. She is a good listener. She's a good communicator. She's one who designs and implements with fidelity. She's inclusive, collaborative, and yes, Michelle, iterative in her processes. And those processes always result, always result in outcomes that are consistent with the commitments of our board and their community, commitments to equity and commitments to excellence. In my experience, she epitomizes what it means to be an effective Bexley City Schools leader, one who is engaging, equipping, and empowering of all learners, children and adults alike, for success. I look forward to working with Jill.
I hate to interrupt you. Will you? I just got, I've got, had several pop-ups. I think people are having a hard time hearing you. Could you lean into your microphone? I'm hoping might be the.
I think it is. I think I had a paper covering up my microphone.
Okay. I think I think the basic, I think I was able to hear you and I and I think others, but I just thought we would make you as clear as possible.
See, this is why you need a new superintendent.
Jill, can you move? Can you work a microphone?
This is mine till June 1st. I I look forward to working with Jill really over the next four months, and I look forward to introducing her to members of our Bexley community, those of you who haven't had yet the opportunity to experience her leadership. When I read through that leadership profile and compared it to the gifts Jill brings to this role, I felt confident the district will be in good hands, truly. And I'm encouraged that perhaps like many of the high-performing districts, Bexley has now begun the practice of developing in its own successors. Those familiar with Bexley stakeholders and Bexley's strategic plan, those who are ready to guide us to the next with a focus on what our community has said is critical right now. And they've said very clearly continuity and stability, and I believe Jill is the right person. Can people hear me now? Okay. Well, speaking of a prospering place, it seems appropriate that I update or provide an update on how our school personnel, both students and staff, are faring during the pandemic. It's a positive note that 88% of Bexley City School staff indicated an interest in receiving the COVID-19 vaccine. The immunizations for K-12 employees began in Franklin County today, and they will continue through Saturday. And the staff feedback on the actual inoculation has been very, very positive. What they don't realize is their arms are going to hurt very, very much tomorrow. But it was just the first group. So while this is good news, the bad news is that the current COVID-19 cases in the City of Bexley remain high. The Bexley data showed a substantial increase in infection rate last week with 748 positive cases out of 100,000 residents. That's up from 487 per 100,000 the week prior. So this is evidence that we cannot allow our guard to come down, even with vaccines for staff on the horizon. And when it comes to determining our learning mode, Bexley City Schools has an evaluation team, and it takes a twofold approach and assesses both the epidemiological response and our district's capacity to continue delivering a high-quality and equitable learning experience to our students. They make a recommendation. In other words, where is the risk of viral spread? And what are its effects on student and staff absences? So our current trajectory of staff and student COVID-related absences remains manageable at its current rate. And we continue to have no data, no data that supports evidence of transmission of the virus in the classrooms. However, we do see positive cases that can be contact traced to social gatherings in the community and indoor sporting events where mask-wearing and social distancing is either not possible or is not enforced. And we are fully committed to increasing contact time and consistency with all of our students in the classrooms, but it has to be within the boundaries of the health and safety measures that have proven thus far to keep our faculty and staff and students safe. A full return to a normal instructional schedule is definitely our shared goal. Hybrid and remote learning was never expected to be a long-term plan. Presently, we operate what we refer to as Hybrid 2.0. Our elementary students have in-person classes every day for half a day. Our middle and high school students all day every other day, except for today, because we had a snow day. So just over half of Ohio's public school districts are operating like us five days a week, while the others are operating part of the week or even remotely. Regardless, I'll say it again, our North Star is to have all students in class every day, all day. So we are diligently reassessing our space requirements and our capacity to ensure that all the safeguards can be observed. And we are watching closely the impact, the impact that the variants of the coronavirus may have on our ability to expand any in-person instructional time. We will continue to work closely with the Bexley Valuation Team as they provide expert guidance and assessment of the epidemiological and system capacity needs. There's one caveat, and this is a critical one. In order to have students, we must have our staff. Employee absences put stress on a school system and risk diminishing the quality of instruction. The Bexley City School faculty are highly skilled, and they play a fundamental role in their students' learning processes. We love them, and we love our guest teachers, and we owe a great deal of gratitude to the community members who have recently become substitutes. Thank you. Still, the district has a need for more substitute teachers in order to ease the burden the pandemic has placed on our school system. The last week of February, staff will have the opportunity to have their second dose of the vaccination, a dose that has resulted in documented 24-hour flu-like side effects. We wouldn't want teachers with those symptoms to be teaching in person or remotely. Many of these individuals have 102-degree temperatures. So without substitutes, we may be facing temporarily a remote learning modality again in just about three weeks. The way to not face that is for you to substitute for us. So if you're interested in subbing, please contact my office, and we'll get you taken care of. Moving on. So very much time away from instruction makes any summer learning opportunities even more important, whether they are one-day learning seminars or multi-week experiences. So we've begun building our portfolio of activities for students and their families. To speak more toward what we're planning, I've asked Chief Academic Officer Jill Abraham to give us a preview of what we're thinking. Jill?
Yeah, thanks, Dr. Good. We began a few weeks ago socializing this idea with our principals to begin to think about summer school differently. Oftentimes, in the past, it's been an opportunity for remediation or maybe to give kids a little bit of a jumpstart into coursework in the year ahead. And what we're recognizing as we've moved through this most unique year is that our kids also need an opportunity just to be together, to have contact with one another. And so we are really looking to offer opportunities throughout the summer that would be a balance of intervention, enrichment, times to just come together and be participate in book clubs to truly have fun in the learning process, to do passion projects. So we most recently reached out to our teachers and surveyed them to share their ideas, share their potential interest in being somebody who might be an instructor. And we've had about 30 staff members who've provided ideas for us. And again, our thinking is it could be something as simple as an opportunity for kids to be together for just one day. It could be a workshop that lasts a week or one day a week throughout the summer. So our hope is to offer a variety of opportunities for our students. We're also hoping to provide family, our families' connections to activities that are happening around central Ohio. So we get so many things from a variety of organizations, ODE, that tell us their summer offerings, and so we want to make sure that those are easily acceptable to our families. So we are, our hope is to be compiling those and be able to give those our plans to our families in early spring. And we also spoke most recently as of today to reach out to our community to allow you the opportunity to provide ideas or interests that you think would be beneficial to our students. Of course, we have big ideas and big hopes, and that requires the support of many people. And so we've also discussed the potential of reaching out to our local colleges and universities to see if their education students would be interested in helping us support this work with our students. So we're excited about the opportunity. We're engaging in that planning, and we hope to provide some wonderful time for our students to connect and learn together this summer.
Thank you, Jill. Following the summer sessions, it's time to begin the 2021-2022 academic year. And tonight, the Board has its first reading of the Bexley High School Curriculum Handbook and modifications to that handbook that reflect new graduation pathways and requirements. Bexley High School Assistant Principal Craig McMillan joins us this evening to provide an overview of those changes. Craig?
Thank you, Dr. Good. Certainly, I was able to communicate the revised version to board members earlier, and they were able to ask some thoughtful questions about about these changes. One of the things that I do want to highlight, it was the source of a handful of questions from the Board of Education members, was specifically about legislation that causes some of these changes to happen. So yes, many of the changes, excuse me, in the class of 2023 and moving forward, there is a change in the number of tests required for graduation. There is no change, I should note, in the number of credits required for graduation for the class of 2023 and beyond, but there are changes to the testing requirements. Those specific documents are linked in the document that we hope to have Board approved and available for families. And I hope the citizens of Bexley can rest assured that I have my finger firmly on the pulse of these changes as well as others on a consistent and almost constant basis.
Thank you. Oh, Dan, you're muted.
Are there any questions for Craig?
No, I will just say that I think it's interesting, these new changes, and I know we have a couple of years to get used to them, but the idea of graduation seals. I'm especially interested in the one about community engagement. And for our students, I think that's a, that's a really service, a service learning model that that I've looked forward to. And I think it'll be interesting to see how that rolls out. So I appreciate you taking the time to to look through that with us, Mr. McMillan, and and I know great things are to come.
I will also just say thank you to Ms. Abraham for getting us the the new handbook with its changes early on so that we would have the time to look through it in advance of the meeting, and also to Mr. McMillan, who did field questions and gave me the answers, and he has now described some of that. So very much appreciate the input and the information and all the work that's going into it.
Thank you. All right.
The final thing I'll speak to, if I may, President Snowden, is the Memorandum of Understanding that is Item 5G. Again, it's an illustration of one of the things I value most about this community, and it's the way we work together. And I will tell you, kudos to Erin Clary and Mark Frank, the leaders of the Bexley Education Association, and to our treasurer, Kyle Smith, and the Director of Operations, Dr. Williams. We sat together and determined that our current leave policy didn't necessarily accommodate the pandemic conditions where one may have a dependent who is quarantined but doesn't have symptoms. And so sick leave is generally awarded to dependents with symptoms. And so we crafted a Memorandum of Understanding, and the bargaining unit was a part of that. And it was, it was really a beautiful model of negotiations. We had some proposed language. The bargaining unit had some proposed language, and we shared that back and forth, vetting it with our respective groups, and came up with something everyone thought was very fair and something that was best for children. And ultimately, that's what drives our decisions. And so I will tell you, I don't really want to read it, but one almost has to read it to understand specifically what it says. But if there is a teacher, bargaining unit member, who has a dependent family member, and that family member is quarantined due to exposure and must remain home, but may not be exhibiting any symptoms, the bargaining unit can use their leave. First, they would use all of their personal leave, except for one day, which they would retain for emergency purposes, and then any remaining sick leave they had so that they could be home with that child, but they wouldn't have to. If they're able to teach remotely from their home and their supervisor agrees that their job responsibilities could be fulfilled, then they would actually teach remotely from home and still be able to provide supervision to their dependent asymptomatic family member who's been quarantined. And so it's, I think it's a wonderful agreement. I think it will again help us address those capacity issues. Remember, which were one of the two conditions we look at when determining the learning modality for Bexley City Schools. So thank you to Erin and Mark and to Harley and Kyle for helping to craft this, and thanks to the Board of Education for supporting this.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate all of your updates and your leadership through this exciting time. All right, can I have a motion to approve Item 5I, which is approval of Items 5B through H? Don't move. Kyle, you can figure that one out. All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Smith, I think it's a roll call vote because it's personnel. Sorry, would you please call the roll?
You're, you're correct. Thank you. The winner was Ms. Minio, so I'll call her first.
Yes.
Mr. Borno?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Snowden?
Yes. Thank you. All right, so moving on, if we can please have Item 6A, our treasurer's comments. Mr. Smith, that's you again.
Thank you. Just pulling up my notes, sorry. I'm also driving the board docs as well. So January tends to be a little bit busier of a month financially. Sorry, as I pull this up for us. So there's, it's mostly on the the income side of things. We'll start with, we start with collecting our first half of our property taxes, line 1.01. And you'll see a variance of about $636,000 to the negative. That's purely a timing issue right now. I don't get too nervous normally when at this time of the year. Usually, I focus in on the final settlement of the first half, which will happen at the end of February or the beginning of March. So right now, it's just a timing variance of of collections. The county was also behind in getting their notices out to property owners. So I believe that's probably why we see a little bit of a decrease than what we would be expecting. The next thing is the the income tax. It also comes in January. I'll come back to that. There's a couple pages later talking about the income tax, and I'll highlight that later. 1.035 is unrestricted state grants and aid. That's higher right now because the, we were a little conservative in forecasting the casino tax, which also comes in January, so that came in better than what we were expecting, mainly due to COVID. We were conservative on that estimate. One thing I'll also mention here is this particular line, 1.035, is going to continue to see a positive variance from here on out. Two weeks ago, the governor adjusted the state budget for schools. If you'll recall, we were, we were receiving funding cuts from the state starting in May and going through this year. The state's financially done better than than forecasting, so they have started to return some of those funds back to agencies, schools being one of them. That for us looks to to be an improvement of over $200,000 towards our budget this year. So that line is going to be better than forecasted. And then other financing sources, again, still in revenue, line 2.06, you're seeing a $376,000 variance. That is primarily due, that that is due to. That is primarily due, that is due to what the state is calling dividend payments from the Bureau of Workers Compensation. So we're in that program with the state. And mainly because of COVID, they started sending money or cash reserves back to districts or, I'm sorry, employers who were part of that program. So for us, that was $300,000 that happened in November. If you'll recall, I said right as I was presenting the November forecast that I, we'd just learned of that payment coming. So it wasn't built into the forecast. So that, that's finally came in January and it's been good news. On the expense side, nothing too alarming. We've seen some, some trend in personnel and insurance benefits being lower than expected, which is always a good thing. One item I'll note, let's skip down to the income tax and then I'll go back to agenda items. So like I said, January is a income tax payment month. It's not the largest we've received, but it's, it's a decent amount. So it is the highest January payment we've received. And in this time is something I wouldn't have guessed or projected, but it's, it's a welcome sign to see a large January payment. The important things that I look at is the green bars, which is the employer payments or payroll withholding. That's the most current data that we have on this, on our income tax. Because it reflects, and you'll see if I scroll down here, the January 21 reflects payroll withholdings primarily of September, October, and November. Obviously, there is some, some payments in individual tax returns and quarterly returns, but primarily what the Department of Taxation says is, is payments primarily payroll taxes. So you can see in the green, that's the highest we've received in recent history. And even in some other portions of this, the individual tax return, 383,000 for this month, again, has been the highest that we've seen in recent history. Also refunds, so people filing adjustments to their taxes or maybe have paid too much in their estimations, that, that amount is lower. The overall good news for that, when you look at on a cumulative standpoint, I hope this is not too small. I'll see if I can zoom in a little bit. So 2021 is the green bar or line coming up. You can see it's hot. The cumulative is the highest we've received so far. Again, kind of strange considering the economic situation we're, we're in. I imagine other districts or communities may not be as fortunate as us when it comes to the income tax collection. But as you can see, if you are looking cumulatively from, from January, this column here, 6.38 million, again, the best that we've seen in recent memory. 2017, you'll see a total of 8.1 million, which is the highest we received. Last year was 7.9. So I would suspect that we're, we're close, we could be close to another $8 million collection year. I'll preface that with saying April 21 is what we still have to come. There's going to be 2020 annual returns. So that's where we could see some effects of COVID. Smaller or reduced incomes, people filing with reduced incomes. So we'll watch that. That'll be telling. The bigger tail will be July 21. That is our largest payment of the year. It represents about 40% of the entire income tax collection. If you'll recall, that was delayed to October this year. A big chunk of that was delayed to October. So good news, I would say, coming from the income tax collection. Any questions about that before I move on to a couple other topics on the agenda?
Mr. Smith, it'd be safe to assume that since we've had these positive collections come in that we weren't necessarily anticipating, should we see a decrease in the filing, on the filing side, that we'll still be in a strong position financially, right? I mean, because it's such a like astounding performance considering.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think what I'm really, what I've really focused on is the, the green, the payroll taxes. With that being consistent and not really seeing dips, even on the, the, the year to date, I think that's, that's important. But as, as I've, you've heard me say a lot, Bexley is unique in that we rely on a lot of individual and quarterly filers. And that's, that's going to be telling. So, but this, we'll see fourth quarter filers in April. But to answer your point, one, we're in strong financial footing right now. And a lot of that's due to the 2019 level. That's really supported us.
Sure. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, can I just ask the other side of that same issue? Really impressive numbers on the revenue side. And you noted that there were a few smaller than expected expenses. And do you expect that to, I know it's impossible to say with certainty, but would it be your experience that we'll probably continue to see those reduced numbers that provide a little bit of savings for us as well?
Yeah, I, what I'm seeing in personnel and retirement insurance benefits as far as trend goes, I would believe that's going to continue. Leaves, leaves of absences change. But I would say the trend for those two particular lines will continue. Purchase service could, could be a timing issue. As, as you and I had a conversation before, it can swing, it can swing a little bit. So for our people listening, this $145,000 was a negative $45,000 a month ago. Two months ago, it was about 145. So you can see it swings a little bit. So that trend could continue, but I'd need to really dive into them.
And that makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions on monthly report or income tax before I highlight a couple other items? Okay, transfers and advances, this is something that we do time to time when there's a negative cash balance for funds or if we need to front grant monies ahead of time before the end of the fiscal year. We normally, I've normally done this for food services in October, but have delayed it a little bit because of a review from the Ohio Department of Education. Just saying that this particular fund had too much cash on hand and they view that as a federal grant or federal dollars. And there are certain stipulations on cash balances with federal dollars. You can't, essentially, you can't have too much money in federal grants. And when we did that in October, it, it really looked like we had way too much cash on hand. So a way to avoid that issue or that concern for auditors is to wait and delay that, that infusion of cash into our food service program to now or, or make smaller transfers. So I've elected to wait until the cash balance gets a little bit lower so it doesn't cross over that threshold that auditors really don't like to see. I'll take this opportunity, opportunity now to also say that our food service department is, is taking a hit financially because of COVID. We're not serving as many students in our lunchrooms as we normally would, obviously. So revenues are down, not as much as I feared going into this school year. Expenditures have gone down a little bit, but that's primarily in food costs. We still have personnel costs, still takes the same number of people to provide 100 lunches versus 200 lunches, for example. So expenditures have not decreased a little bit. So my point is, I expect us to transfer a little bit more this year and we'll do that in June. Finally, I just have, for your information, a records commission meeting scheduled for the 25th of this month. This is a meeting primarily between, by statute, the superintendent, myself, and the board president. We normally have this in September or October. And the purpose is primarily to dispose of records that are on our record schedule for disposal. For me, that is old records with purchase orders or checks that have exceeded 10 years with, and being, being audited. They take up space. I, I'm happy to say that in the future, there won't be records to dispose of in, in my office when it comes to purchase orders because we're digital. But we still have some records from 2010, 2011 that are collecting dust and could, could use storage for other areas or other departments could use that storage. So that's the primary reason. We also will review our records retention schedule, which we're required to have. And if there's any adjustments to that schedule, we'll submit those changes to the Ohio History Connection and the Ohio Auditor of State. They both have to approve our records retention schedule. So it usually follows a prescribed format that they, they have and we adjust as necessary as, as things change. For example, it used to be everything was paper. You kept out, you kept all the paper. Now with things being digital, we've updated that, that record schedule to, to reflect the capability of digital storage. It's a pretty easy and quick meeting.
Thank you very much. All right, any questions for, any other questions for Mr. Smith?
I apologize for seeing the side of my head as I was looking at.
And I know you're wearing a lot of hats tonight. I appreciate it. Okay. Then can I have a motion to approve item 6E, which is approval of item 6B and C?
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. That motion carries. All right, so tonight, we because it's a regular board meeting, have a public comment available as we have been doing in the past with our Zoom meetings, we have asked people to sign up in advance so that we can let you raise your hand and speak. Mr. Trill, do we have, or Mr. Smith, do we have people sign up for public comment tonight?
Yes, Ms. Snowden, we do. I've allowed the, the raising of hands. So if, if Ms. Rubin could raise her hand, she was the first.
All right.
With this, I'll give her a second and see if I can also see any name by that.
Okay, I will go ahead and read our.
Yeah, please. Yeah.
Our lead in then. So although under state law, the Board of Education is not required to offer public comment time during regular board meetings, we do welcome the opportunity to hear from our community members. As such, we encourage your participation within certain parameters. Prior to the start of your speaking, if you could please tell us your full name and address, we would appreciate that. Please also limit your comments to five minutes per our board policy. Finally, we know the public comment is just that, it's the public's opportunity to be heard. It is not a Q and A session with the board. We look forward to hearing from your comments, but per our board policy, we will not respond to public comments in meeting or as individual board members. You can be assured, however, that we are actively listening and taking notes for future reference and review. With that said, Mr. Smith, do you want to?
Yes, I, I see the individual, or I see Ms. Rubin. I'm going to allow her to talk in case raising the hand option is not available. So we'll we'll try this and.
We'll keep telling you. Thank you.
Sorry. Okay. Ms. Rubin, you with us?
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Okay, um, so thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. And I'll try to keep it brief. I just wanted to discuss a little bit just about the process and I mean no disrespect to Ms. Abraham. I did have a pleasant experience working with her on the task force for some of the reopening measures. And I mean her no disrespect and I'm sure that she is a very qualified candidate. My concern, and I think that I'm expressing concern from the community, I think that my, my opinions are representative, is not about Ms. Abraham specifically, but about the process and the lack of transparency. The fact that we found out a couple of hours before this meeting that you were even so close to hiring someone is what I think a lot of us found, quite frankly, alarming. And while I recognize that, you know, you're, and, and actually, I don't, I don't know the law on this and I, and I will, you know, refrain from sort of saying what the law is. I understand that it's your opinion that you have the sort of right to make that, these decisions as a board unilaterally without community input. It's not the input that bothers me, the lack of input, it's the lack of transparency. So for example, if it had been presented to the community that we have this wonderful internal person who is the right person for the job, that we're not going to go outside of this person to find another candidate and allowed the community to express any concerns that they might have prior to you making this decision, I think again, there would be a little bit less frustration from the community. And the fact that there's still, even while I've been listening to this meeting, there's been a complete lack of, of real sort of disclosure as to what criteria were looked at other than this sort of three-year-old leadership qualification that was, you know, sort of gathered together. What the types of leadership qualities that you read were the types of things that I could, if I Googled the word leader, these are the types of things that would come up. You know, that does not necessarily lend itself to saying that this one candidate, the only candidate we looked at fulfills these qualifications. I'm sure that she does. But can we be sure that she is the only person who would be the right person for this job at this time? And the answer again, maybe yes, but the failure to look outside of just what is in front of us and not sort of make a wide candidacy search is what really concerns me. And again, this lack of transparency until the moment before. And, you know, again, I, I just wanted, I just would really request that there be some sort of report or written statement that really in detail goes through how you came to this decision. Hearing that you've been having these conversations for three or four months in executive sessions when the community had no idea that this is how this process was going and how fast it was going. Again, it, it leads me to believe that there's absolutely no transparency. And again, like I just, I, I, I'm saying the same thing over and over again because again, this was so quick and I, and I haven't had a chance to really prepare my thoughts. But what, what this frustration is, it really reflects a lack of trust in the Board of Education's decisions. And that is such a grave concern and something that I really hope that you all will take back and think about, that the community doesn't feel like they can just trust you to say, this is the right person for the job. Rather, their response is, oh my gosh, what are they doing? How did they find this person? You know, on and on and on and on and on. It reflects a real lack of trust. And I hope that you'll take that back and you'll think about that and you'll find ways to communicate better with the community, with more time, with more effort, with more engagement. And again, you know, one of the ways that you can maybe repair this process, which is appears to have already happened, is to provide that information to us, provide us with a detailed report of every step you took, every discussion that you had that you're allowed to disclose and, and how that process was done. And give us the opportunity to say, maybe this wasn't the right, the right thing to do. I also request that perhaps as part of your contract negotiations, you consider some sort of out clause. I'm not going to be the only one to suggest that maybe Ms. Miller was not everyone's favorite candidate, was not everyone's favorite superintendent. And I would hate to get ourselves into a situation where we had this ongoing obligation if it turns out that this one candidate that we looked at did not turn out to be the best person. Again, my apologies to Ms. Abraham that you've been sort of drug in the middle of this where I really do feel like this is not your fault and I mean you no disrespect. But I do just want to say that I do think that represents where the community is at with this. And again, I ask you to, you know, provide us with some more transparency and disclosure.
Ms. Rubin, thank you. I, I'm sorry, we failed to ask for, for you to state your name and your address as part of our record.
Sure. My name is Lauren Rubin. I live at 156 South Drexel Avenue. And that's obviously in Bexley.
Thank you. Next, I believe I saw the hand raised. Yes, Alana Spector. I will allow you to speak and it looks like you're good to go.
Hello, this is Alana Spector. I live at 2444 Fair Avenue. I imagine that with people listening, my name and my voice is becoming more familiar. And that is because I follow the activities of the Board of Education closely. And I think it's important to note that as of 4:00 PM today, I had absolutely no intention of making a public comment because looking at the agenda as presented, there was nothing to address. So imagine my. So imagine my shock and horror to learn a mere hour before the meeting that this board has chosen a new superintendent for our district. This board has made a long term commitment without any transparency at all. This is a public body. You are subject to sunshine laws. You are subject to the Open Meeting Act. And while you are entitled to discuss personnel matters in your executive sessions, the Open Meeting Act states that, quote, "No vote or other decision making on the matters discussed may take place," unquote. And clearly, when you put out a public notice that you've made a decision on who to hire, we as a community are going to question whether you followed the sunshine laws. I echo Mrs. Rubin's comments. This is not an issue with Mrs. Abramson. She is potentially the right candidate. This is an issue with the Board of Education. Mr. Barno stated, "We should not get mired down in the process." I could not disagree with that statement any more strongly. This is an engaged community and our most valuable asset is arguably our school district. Our Board of Education ran on slogans like transparency and your voice. And you made a decision that will have a long term effect on this community behind closed doors. And I cannot believe that my first opportunity to give public comment is after you've already voted. I understand that you made this decision based on information you gathered three years ago. But much has changed in this community from three years ago, including technology, a worldwide pandemic, our community's recognition of systematic racism in our community and in our school district, discrimination against protected groups in our community. And I would like to remind you that the search three years ago resulted in a hire who a large segment of the community did not feel understood the vision of this community. And she was clearly not long term. I understand that you relied on work groups. But those work groups were not tasked with finding a superintendent. And those work groups were not open to any resident who wanted to participate. From my perspective, they were cherry picked. And I find those statements to be upsetting. Again, Mrs. Abramson may be the perfect candidate. But I have questions. Some of the qualifications you're asking for is someone with a deep understanding of the district. She's only been here a year and a half. I I would question a deep understanding of a district that you've only been in for a year and a half. You were looking for somebody with a deep understanding of leadership. Yet from my brief research, and again, I had an hour. Mrs. Abramson has only held a superintendent's license since 2019 and has never been a superintendent in any district. I think that we need somebody that has experience. I think that's a lot of what Dr. Good brought with that with him. I am appalled that just days ago, we got a letter from Dr. Good's community stating that this would come, this search would become with transparency. And one of the qualifications you're looking for is to someone who would honor community demand for transparency with complete information. I can't understand how you can say those words and vote on a superintendent with no public input. You say that you want somebody who's going to build trust in the staff. And while you read a lovely letter, I've had several staff members reach out to me today or this evening stating that they did not support this process or lack thereof. Mrs. Abramson may be the best candidate, but I would like to know who else you consider. I would like to know if you considered minority candidates. I would like to know who else was available. Because a three year old search would not have given us Mrs. Abraham. She didn't hold a superintendent's license at the time. This district deserves a thorough, transparent, thoughtful and collaborative search. And if she's the best candidate, that would be wonderful and we can move forward. But this Board of Education acted out of turn, and I will not ignore the process. Thank you.
Thank you. So that concludes our portion of public participation and public comment. We are moving now on to item eight, which is other matters that make properly come before the board. Having added none of those that are at the beginning with our agenda approval, we can move on to executive session. We have another executive session this evening. And I would now entertain a motion to make sure I have the right portion of. Sorry, don't. There we go. Thank you for your patience. I'd like to entertain a motion to hold an executive section under Ohio Revised Code 121.22 to consider the preparing, conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning the compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
So.
Thank you.
Second.
Thanks.
Sure, you're interested in getting the fuck out of there.
Thank you. Having a first and second, may all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Mr. Smith, did you get everybody on that one? Ms. Powers, I think you might have been on mute.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Any opposing sign? Thank you. That motion carries. So we will now move into executive session. We will come back and adjourn our meeting when we are done our exec with executive session. We do not anticipate a vote after executive session, but we will adjourn again upon its completion. Thank you.
Okay, so we are now here out of executive session. And can I have a motion to resume our regular board meeting?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. All on paper please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Sure. Do you need to... Sorry, Michelle and I are sharing room. Just say aye.
Aye.
Now mute.
Got it. I heard it.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. So I need now a motion to adjourn our meeting. So can I have a motion for adjournment please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All on paper please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed same sign. That motion carries. Thank you. Good night all.
Thank you.